I'm good, and I'm not present. I let my dog out to go to the bathroom this morning. She was a good day for a little walk.
That's the time we're gonna...
Pets, man. Pets and kids.
I didn't catch that part. What did Jim want to do as a heads up on?
Good morning. We'll call the committee to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yeah.
Bone. Schalki.
Here.
Gambrell.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Chairman Stamos.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Well, next to the invocation and pledge.
Dear Almighty God, we again acknowledge your great majesty and remain thankful for your wonderful mercy towards our country despite our many failings in following your decrees. Thank you for this past weekend where billions of people around the world could celebrate their faith in the resurrection of the Lord Jesus Christ nearly 2,000 years ago. We thank you that we have the protection of the freedom of religion embedded in our great constitution, as withstood the test of time for nearly 240 years since it was ratified. Thank you for your blessings on Midland County, and we pray that they will continue. Again, thank you for the unity on this board, and Lord, help us make wise decisions for Midland County today. Lord, we ask you to help our county employees who work in this building to have the strength to keep a positive attitude as they work through the many inconveniences, irritations, distractions, and challenging times as this building is being renovated. Thank you that they've been doing so well. Lord, I ask that you prosper the businesses in this county, oh God, and that there are many employees. Help them all. We ask all these things in your precious name, oh Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on, we will approve minutes for March 18th for the commissioners and April 15th executive committee. Need a motion and support.
So moved. Support.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Acceptance of claims and accounts for the week of February 10th, 17th, and 24th, and March 3rd and 10th of 2025.
Properly addressed general bank claims approved for the weeks of 210 through 214 in the amount of $1,123,635.03, with total general fund expenditures $94,520.19. General bank claims approved for the weeks of 217 through 221 in the amount of $3,765,881.1 with total general fund expenditures $213,093.07. General bank claims for the weeks of 224 through 228 in the amount of $304,852.96, with total general fund expenditures $88,120.11. General bank claims for the weeks of 33 through 37 in the amount of $417,016.56, with total general fund expenditures $93,693.1. General bank claims for the weeks of 310 through 314 in the amount of $1,096,859.19, with total general fund expenditures $99,934.38.
Thank you. I need a motion and support to accept the claims and accounts as presented.
Chairman, I move that we approve, that we accept the claims and accounts for the weeks stated.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same side. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. We'll move on to special programs of the day. We do have two special programs, and I'm going to ask Bridget to lead this one off.
Thank you very much, Jim. I'm actually gonna go up.
Please.
Just turn this around a little bit. So, we have a special guest today from the Michigan Municipal League, Emily Kelishevsky. Did I say it right? And she has a special presentation for one of our employees who just went through a leadership program for women in local government. Come on up, Emily.
Hello. Well, I am thrilled to be here today. I'm from the Michigan Municipal League, as Bridget mentioned, and we run a leadership program for women who are ascending in roles in local government. And one of Midland County's employees recently completed that program and was unable to join us back in March for the formal graduation ceremony, so we decided to surprise her today because Tiffany did an amazing job in the program, was a huge asset to the class, and we are thrilled to watch her grow throughout her leadership journey. The other thing I'll note is that Bridget has been a huge supporter of the program since it started back in 2018. And to have Bridget join us for the program this year, to have Tiffany with us, and to complete such a wonderful program, and to be such a wonderful representative from Midland County, we are thrilled to be here today to present her with her certificate from the Women's Municipal Leadership Program.
Here, here.
Thank you, Emily, for being here today. Thanks, Jim, for coming.
Absolutely. Thank you, Emily, for coming. We appreciate it, and congratulations, Tiffany. We appreciate all your additional work and efforts, so. Up next, we have the Region 7 Area Agency on Aging Executive Director Monica Pryor. Good morning.
You said it. You said it right, Pryor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning to you all. I'm sure my presentation won't be nearly as exciting, but I wanted to take time to come and visit with you all. We try to do this once a year. I'd also like to point out that our board member, Mr. Mallico, is here, and our advisory council member, Mr. Peck, are here to offer support, and also so that you know who they are, because they're in your county doing the work for Region 7. So, a few things about area agencies on aging. It's our 50th year. In 1975, the concept of area agency on aging was born out of the older Americans Act, and there are now approximately 600 of them across the whole country. There are 15 others besides us in Michigan that make up, we touch the entire state. Our planning service area is primarily mid-Michigan. We cover 10 counties from the shores of Lake Huron, all of the thumb, all the way across to Isabella and Clare Counties and Grashit County. So, we have one of the largest service areas in Michigan, but I will say that I feel that Region 7 does a great job of covering all 10 counties. We provide supplemental, or we provide funding to supplement your county millages, and we partner with local organizations such as your Department on Aging to make numerous programs available to elderly and disabled adults in your communities. We are able to provide administrative and operational functions at a cost of approximately 5% versus the state-level administrative cost of 15%. We also have the benefit of, we are, we're the boots on the ground in your communities. I have staff that is in your communities every single day. There's somebody out there seeing your vulnerable adults every day. We offer, I've given you basically a toolkit, all of you got, I call it a toolkit, but it has a comprehensive agency brochure in there. It has a lot of other things that you can hand out to someone if you feel that they need help in their home. And it's not about, like, who qualifies for what. Yes, there are qualifications for every program that we have. However, we also have an information and assistance department, and we just hired four person-centered options counselors. So if you know anyone in the community who needs help, just have them give us a call, and our options counselors will work through with them. It may not be a service provided directly by us, but they will get them to where they need to go, and they will get them with the program that best fits what they need. So, there's even a little packet of cards. A lot of my board members carry those little cards in their wallets, because that's the easiest and fastest way to get them to us, is just give them one of those cards. We have services such as the My Choice Waiver Program you may have heard of. That program is funded directly through DHS. We serve, in 2024, we served 102 people in your communities. That program is a very, that is the strongest advocacy goal for us for this year. The entire state is working with your legislators, with the state, with the federal government to keep that funding and keep it moving, because those people are the ones that, if we weren't servicing them in their homes, they would most likely be in a nursing home. So, I look at each county as I come to them, and I say to myself, well, I know what nursing homes you have in your county. Do they have 102 beds available among all of them? Probably not. So what would happen if they decreased that funding for the My Choice Waiver Program? Potentially, somebody could be in their home without the help they need, or want to be in their home, and they have to go to the nursing home. They could even get pushed out to other nursing homes in other counties because of the lack of the ability to serve them. So, anytime you get a chance to tell your representatives about the My Choice Waiver Program and how important that funding is, that it at least maintains status quo, but not to reduce it. So that's, that's one of the things. I also always like to let you know, there's a sheet in your packet that lists all the funding that goes through your county. You pay us dues every year, and last year you paid us $4,490. What you received back through all of this funding in your county was $536,000 and some change. So, that's to fund all those programs that are listed on that sheet, with the exception of My Choice Waiver, because that one comes through the state and federal funds. So I always like to make sure you understand that we're putting back into your community. That is what our job is, is to do that, and we're gonna do everything we can to continue doing that. I have no news on funding, as probably you know. We, I was just on a national call yesterday. Excuse me. There were 700 agencies from all walks of life on that call. They really can't tell us anything. We're all along for the ride. I just don't, I don't encourage any sort of panic. We know there's gonna be change in funding from the federal and the state levels. I can tell you what the state is telling us. They are working diligently to come up with plans to make sure that if funding is lost, that they have another way to replace it, or that they can reorganize so that we keep taking care of all of our vital services, and your elderly and vulnerable adults fall right under those vital services. So, that's, you know, what they're telling us. I can also tell you that Region 7 has a contingency plan. We carry a fund balance that is designed specifically for situations where if funding doesn't happen to come through on time or as expected, that we can maintain services for, at a minimum, three months with some, you know, contingency work, possibly longer. But we have that in place, so I don't want, you know, anyone worrying they won't get a meal. We're gonna keep plowing forward, and we're gonna do everything we can to keep things in place. And I think that's about all I have for you today, but do you have any questions for me?
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions?
This is more of a comment, but I just wanna say to my other commissioners, who might, who maybe might not be as familiar with your program, how amazing it truly is it. In my other role, I work with Region 7 all the time, and it's truly amazing. We're like, well, what do we do? How do we deal with this person? How do we get them home? Well, how do we have them in an environment that's safe? Oh, just call Region 7. And it's from making sure that helping people get ramps on their house, to making, helping with rough repairs, to helping someone come over and help them to the bathroom a few times a day. It's vitally important, and it's amazing work that they do, and it means all the difference in the world to our seniors.
Thank you.
And thank you. It truly is, for us, it's a labor of love, because we, that's what we do. We take care of people, and I know a lot of people don't even know who we are.
The other question, a question I had.
Commissioner.
Is, so, do you, you work with the community action agencies too, then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes. Yes, we work with pretty much any agency in your county that is helping the elderly or disabled.
Bridget, did you have something?
Just including Pinecrest. We have residents at Pinecrest who are on Reader 7 waiver, which is really good for us and good for them.
And I did have one quick, a couple quick questions. On your sheet for the return match, number one, are all the dollars that you show on the sheet awarded to specifically Midland County, or is this throughout the region?
No, it's, that is just Midland County.
Specific for Midland?
Yes.
The $536,000.
And then you have in the center, HDM. I'm not sure what.
Home Delivered Meals.
Thank you.
Yes, we're, we love our acronyms.
Yes. All right. And I know that program is well appreciated as well, so thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. At this time, we will open invitation for public comment. Please know that you have a three-minute limit, and we, please feel free to come to the mic and provide your name and address, please. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to standing committee reports and resolutions. Committee report number one.
Date of April 17th. Properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration and Operations Committee, recommend approval of the attached proclamation declaring the month of April 2025 as National County Government Month. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson Eric Dorian, Larry Schalki, Administration Operations Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder.
Mister Chairman, the Administration Operations Committee recommends 18-4-25.
All right. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, any commissioner discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the...
So, for people to know, there's no cost with this, with this proclamation, and that we are members of the National Association of Counties, and they're the ones who are opposing that because there are advocacy with the federal government, and so, align ourselves with them, because we already are.
Thank you. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Bar is absent. Commissioner Schalki.
Yes.
Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Committee report number two.
Date of April 17th. Properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration and Operations Committee, recommend approval of the amendment to the current agreement with Securis Technologies Incorporated for the provision of communication services at the county jail. The purpose of this amendment is to comply with a recent federal communication commission's order. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson Eric Dorian, Larry Schalki, Administration Operations Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder.
Yes, Mister Chairman, the Administration Operations Committee recommends 20-4-25.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any commissioner discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Commissioner Schalki.
Yes.
Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone is absent, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Bone is absent, Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you. With that, move on to committee report number three.
Date of April 17th. Properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the grant agreement with the Prosecutor and Attorney Association of Michigan, P.A.A.M., for the 2022-2023 Ryan State Crisis Intervention Program Grant. Once received, all funds will need to be expended and accounted for by March 30th, 2026. Under this agreement, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office will receive $21,995 to purchase billboards, radio ads, safe storage banners, and gun lock dispensers. We recommend approval of the agreement and that the Administrator Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson Eric Dorian, Larry Schalki, Administration Operations Committee, Larry Schalki, Todd Gambrell, Finance Committee.
Thank you. With that, Commissioner Snyder.
Mister Chairman, the Administration Operations Committee recommends 19-4-25.
Thank you. And Commissioner Schalki.
Mister Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 19-4-25.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, any commissioner comment or discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Commissioner Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bone is absent. Schalki.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Committee report number four.
Date of April 17th. Properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the grant agreement with the State Court Administrator's Office scale for the 2025-2026 Status Offense Division Diversion Project Grant Program. The term of this agreement is April 14th, 2025, through September 30th, 2026. This is a federal reimbursement grant in amount up to $100,000. We recommend approval of the agreement and that the Administrator Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson Eric Dorian, Larry Schalki, Administration Operations Committee, Larry Schalki, Todd Gambrell, Finance Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder.
Mister Chairman, the Administration Operations Committee recommends 22-4-25.
Thank you. Commissioner Schalki.
Mister Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 22-4-25.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? I think there is. Good morning.
We're not here for, well, I'm Lori Balmarito. I'm the deputy director, deputy court administrator for Midland County Probate and Family Court. I've brought with me today Susan Hess, who is our interim assistant director at the Juvenile Justice Center. She was the author of the grant and completed the grant application in, I think, today's record time, so we're just here if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I appreciate them coming forward for that, and if Judge Cole took time out of her day to be here, which we're so thankful, so just wanted to recognize if you wanted to say anything as well. Thank you for doing that in such short amount of time. And then I just appreciate the teamwork within our team, so we got that email and responded quickly and got it on the agenda.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? All right. Seeing none, any commissioner comments or discussion?
Thank you for the work you did to get that for the grant. That's gonna be really helpful for our student, young people here in our county, so thank you for doing this good job.
Any other commissioner comments and/or discussion? I also just would like to say thank you. It's a lot of work to go through the grant process, and it's awesome that you're putting it towards our county and those that need it, so thank you so much. We appreciate it. Anything else?
I would only add that the purpose of the grant is to address our chronic problem of turancy and to, which has really increased drastically since COVID. And the purpose behind the grant and the new programming is to keep kids out of the court system, so they don't end up with records, to divert those youth away from the court system with their involvement and services to be provided to their families.
Very cool. Thank you.
Commissioner Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bone is absent. Schalki.
Yes.
Gambrell.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
All right. Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to committee report number five.
Date of April 17th. Properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of a mid-year wage increase for county elected officials as follows. County Clerk, 105, $105,800. Drain Commissioner, $102,187. Prosecutor and attorney, $160,820. Register of deeds, $95,367. Sheriff, $134,247. Treasurer, $106,534. We further recommend the Administrator Controller be authorized to make the necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, Larry Schalki, Todd Gambrell, Finance Committee.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Schalki.
Mister Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 95-10-24.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any commissioner discussion?
Mister Chairman, I guess, though, the, this is a complicated issue that, and I did not, and will continue not to vote approval of this, of just whether the timing of this, with this raise, I recognize the purpose of this raise is to bring the elected officials in along with the policy of keeping whatever the union, I don't know which unions totally actually, but there was a seven and a half percent increase with the union, and the elected officials had had a 3%, so this is an adjustment to bring it up to there, and then, which is around a 4 and 1/2%. And there is, this has looked like wrong timing, some of the costs of living for people on fixed income, Social Security was 2 and 1/2%. The elected officials already had 3, and I know I work with some community health agencies, we haven't had a raise for a couple of years, so there are some challenges, and we look at the total spread of people, taxpayers, in doing this, so I had, was not supported in knowing, see whether we did a small or doing it at a later time. And so, I just wanted to explain where I was coming on this issue.
Thank you. Any other commissioner discussion? Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I just wanted, I'm sure it's fine, but I just wanted to check in with Bridget that there is enough wiggle room in the budget to accommodate all of these stages.
Yeah, and, yeah, thank you. Do you want me to answer to him?
Please.
The adjustment will be made by balancing other accounts. We will use surplus if we need to. I don't think that's gonna have to be the case, but we will add this to the next quarterly or general budget adjustment, and we will, that will come in front of finance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner discussion? All right. Seeing none, I will add, I do support the motion. I think that the adjustment, after looking at some of the information, is worthy, yet over the years of being in public office, there's never a good time for such of this, but at the same time, smaller ones instead of larger ones typically is, I think, a better process to do, but I, again, do support this, and so I will ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Schalki.
No.
Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Five yes, one no, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you. And we will move on to committee report number six.
Date of April 17th. Properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, have reviewed the Administrator Controller's proposed budget assumptions to be used in preparation of the 2026 Administrator Controller-recommended budget, and recommend approval of those assumptions as attached. Respectfully submitted, Larry Schalki, Todd Gambrell, Finance Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Schalki.
Mister Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 8-2-25.
Thank you. Is there any public discussion? Seeing none, any commissioner discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Schalki.
Yes.
Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Committee report number seven.
Date of April 17th. Properly addressed, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the 2025 State Tax Commission Report of County Equalized Value Form L4024. This report is in accordance with MCL 209.5 and 211.34. This report is in accordance with MCL 209.5 and 211.34, and should be submitted to the state prior to May 5, 2025. Respectfully submitted, Larry Scholke, Todd Gambrell, Finance Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholke.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 21-4-25.
Thank you. Is there any public discussion? Seeing none, any commissioner discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scholke.
Yes.
Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent motion carries.
Thank you. Committee report number eight.
Dated April 17th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Human Services Committee have reviewed the request to make appointments for the county's material management program. We recommend approval of the following. Appointment of Stephen Stoddard, Midland County Environmental Health Director, to serve as the DPA on the MMP Committee, and to coordinate activities between Midland County and the multi-county MMP. Appointment of Scott Olafland as a at-large member to the MMP Board. Respectfully submitted, Elena Smith, Chairperson Eric Dorian, Jeanette Snyder, Human Services Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. The Human Service Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 50-5-24.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, any commissioner comment? Commissioner Scholke.
I don't know if Steve I see is here, if he wants, I don't know if Fred wants to introduce Steve, he's new to the department.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to ask you, the Health Director, the request basically centers on the Heartland Materials Management Consortium that we belong to, the bylaw state that we need to have a county-designated planning agent, and this is Steve Stoddard, our Midland Health Director, and the proposal would be to have him represent the business of the county on that board.
Thank you.
Steve Stoddard.
Thank you, Mr. Stoddard. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Now, and I think is Scott, he's continuing on, so that's not a new appointment?
I don't believe he's been officially appointed yet, and, but the Heartland Board would like up to three members from Midland County to represent, so Scott basically will represent the interest of the city as well as the overall interest of the county.
All right. All right. Any other discussion, commissioners? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Scholke.
Yes.
Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent motion carries.
Thank you. Committee report number nine.
Dated April 17th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Human Services Committee recommend approval of the attached resolution to appoint Lori Tarkowski as the Privacy Officer and Chris Cantrell as the Security Officer for the County of Midland. These appointments are necessary for the county to maintain compliance with HIPAA and high-tech regulations. Respectfully submitted, Elena Smith, Chairperson Eric Dorian, Jeanette Snyder, Human Services Committee.
Thank you. And Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Human Services Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 17-3-25.
And thank you, and because it is a resolution, I do need support.
Support.
Thank you. Any public comment? Seeing none, any commissioner comment? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Scholke.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent motion carries.
Thank you. With that, requests, petitions, and communications, currently we have none. Do you not have any old business and/or new that I've seen before me? We will move on to commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner Snyder.
Thank you. I appreciate the program that we had today from Region 7, and recognizing Tiffany, congratulations. And he's already left, I should have said it, but welcome to Stephen, is it Stoddard?
Stoddard.
Stoddard, as our new Environmental Health Director, as well as his new role that we talked about this morning. That is all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholke.
All right. Let's echo everything Commissioner Snyder had said, and appreciate, again, the visitors who come to, interest in our county government. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Gambrell.
Congratulations, Tiffany. It's very nice to see people honored for the hard work they do, and again, thanks to everybody who came and shared their story with us today, especially the probate court, who's done a fantastic job in the short amount of time.
Commissioner Dorian.
I would also like to echo Commissioner Snyder's comments. Thank you, Tiffany, and Region 7, Region 7, which I am a benefactor of their services, so greatly appreciated.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. I'll echo the previous comment. Honestly, today just made me, we had a lot of good presentations, and it makes me excited for Midland and how aware of how many people are working to help different parts of our county. We have, you know, Region 7 working on helping the elderly folks, and then we have folks from the courts working on helping the youth. We have Tiffany working to help our finances. We just, we have a great team working for Midland.
Thank you. Definitely echo all the remarks. Again, Tiffany, thank you for the commitment and continuing to work towards learning and helping Midland stay on track, so thank you for that. Again, it was nice for the courts and Region 7 as well. Other than that, we'll move on to meeting schedules. We'll start with Commissioner Snyder.
Thank you. So this evening is the City of Coleman at 7:00 PM in Edenville Township. I went to Edenville last month, so I will hit Coleman tonight. On the 24th is Midland County Road Commission at 9:00 AM. Also, that evening is the Wicksome Lake Improvement Board Meeting at 6:00 PM in Billings Township. On the 29th, we will have our committee meeting, so I will announce A&amp;O at 2:30. And the first, we have General Employees Retirement at 10:00 AM here, and that brings us up to our next board meeting on the 6th.
All right. Commissioner Scholke.
Thank you. So I'll be attending the Mid Michigan Community Action Agency on this Thursday, 4:30, in Farwell, and then we've got, that's on Thursday, 4/24. On 4/20, next week, 4/29, the speaking, Chairman, or Commissioner, the, it's not here, the Commissioner, Bone's not here, that we announced in the Finance Subcommittee we'll be meeting